Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 7, 2017. We're going to start tonight with a moment of silence for two Milton residents who tragically died in a house fire a couple of days ago. Kenneth Guskott, former president of the NAACP in Boston, and also Leroy Whitmore. Two residents of the town who unfortunately lost their lives due to a tragic fire. And our firefighters, of course, did very heroic efforts in an effort to save them, and unfortunately, that was not the result. So we will observe a moment of silence for Mr. Guskott and Mr. Whitmore. Thank you. And thank you to our firefighters. Obviously, any event like this is very difficult for them as well. Thank you to Milton Fire Department for their always heroic efforts. Onto our agenda. We have no minutes to approve tonight. We have future meeting dates of March 21 and April 4. We need to come up with a second date in April. We are -- we'll talk about this when we get to the warrant articles. We were going to be meeting with the warrant committee tomorrow night. We're not posted for a meeting, but we may be able to meet individually with them on different items. And then we are going to meet on March 13, very briefly, just to sign some paperwork relating to bonds. Do we have anyone tonight for Citizen Speak? Seeing none, then we have a public hearing scheduled for six more minutes. It's scheduled for 7:10. Do we want to move up while we're waiting on that, since we have to wait until 7:10? Do we want to take one of the items at the end of the agenda? Maybe a little bit --
10.
Yes, why don't we start with item 10?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the First Parish Milton Unitarian Church for the event to be held at 535 Canton Avenue on Saturday, March 3, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Just one question. It's not being issued to First Parish, it's being -- the liquor is being issued to a resident. Do we make sure that they have liquor liability insurance when we do this? Does anybody check that?
I think we should look into that.
I wouldn't want to issue a liquor license with liquor liability insurance being issued.
Isn't it --
I don't know.
Just to ensure.
Yeah, let's -- why don't we ask our licensing agent to look into that question for us? But in the meantime, it's coming up this Saturday. Subject to confirming that, can we --
I'll approve, yes.
Okay. So subject to confirming that. Then any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How about number 11, Wallaston Golf Course?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of the following members to the 2017 Wallaston Golf Club Board of Directors as voted at its November 10, 2016 Board Directors' meeting and its monthly meeting on February 15, 2017. David Gooding of 173 Spark Street, Brockton; James Ferrara of 121 Will Drive, Canton; Paul McManus of 500 Atlantic Ave, Boston; William Roach of 475 Highland Street, Milton; Joseph Harrington of 190 Williams Street, New Bedford; Patrick O'Brien of 5-11 Dry Dock Ave, Boston; Christopher Castor of 267 Hillside Street, Milton; James Moore of 2 Elias Lane, Milton; William Walsh of 152 Bradley Road, Milton; and Edward Merritt of 455 West Broadway, South Boston.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 12, we have people coming in for number 13, the animal shelter. This is really a follow-up on a matter that we had previously discussed and referred to the Animal Shelter Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign a contract with Rahous -- was it Friedenfeld and Associates for the design services for the new animal shelter.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Just for the public watching, Town Council has reviewed this and had a lot of input into it with the Animal Shelter Committee and Mr. Swinski. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, a couple more minutes to go. We still have -- we have a board and appointment committee for the Milton Village Central Ave Revitalization Committee.
Okay, I'll move to appoint Ruth Hayden of 88 Woff Street, Unit 513, to the Milton Village Central Ave Revitalization Committee to serve through April 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the tree warden?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Branch Lane of 85 Highland Street as tree warden to serve through March 2018.
I will second.
Any discussion?
How long has Branch Lane been the tree warden?
I don't know, good question, a long time.
Longer than I -- I don't want to count.
Certainly put in a lot of years of service.
Very lucky.
Yes, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, all of our other items are going to take a little bit more time. Why don't we ask if anyone is going to be -- I think Mr. Corcoran is going to be meeting with us regarding the sign hearing. If you'd like to join us at the table, and please feel free to come up and set up your materials, we'll start right at 7:10. While we're waiting, I'll just thank Jackson Humphries, member of Troop 3 of the Boy Scouts at St. Mary of the Hills, for joining us again this evening. He was here last week with other members of the troop to observe, and Mr. Dennehy and I just did a short interview with him about the town budget before we got started. So it's great to see that interest that the troop has in what's going on in town, and thank him for the time he has spent talking with us, giving us a lot of good questions about the town budget. Helps us get ready for tonight's discussion.
Future civic leader.
That's right.
Absolutely, and a sharp one.
Okay, just at 7:10, so why don't we open a public hearing on an application from Mattress Firm for a lit sign on Granite Avenue? And welcome, Mr. Corcoran. Would you like to identify yourself and the person with you?
Yes, thank you very much. Ned Corcoran here on behalf of the Falcone Companies and Mattress Firm. I'm joined by Diane Falcone, who is one of a large group of member -- the family of Falcones who own property, number of properties in Milton, and I think should be recognized as really contributing to the rebirth of some of the areas of Milton with some of the work that they've done, particularly in East Milton Square.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
And the Falcones recently acquired the property that's kind of recognized now as the Sleepy's Building. They acquired last year from the Kennedy family, the building at -- right on the edge of the town of Milton and the city of Quincy. I submitted some materials, I think, but this is the building. It's just on the edge of Granite Avenue. Current configuration has two signs that were permitted over the last number of years and three different findings by this board and prior iterations of this board. First in 2008, an LED sign was approved on the Westerly facade for what was then Kennedy Carpet overlooking the Expressway and overlooking Granite Avenue. In 2011, they were allowed to move that sign to the LED format that's on the south-facing elevation of the roof. And in 2013, the board, in recognition of the fact that Sleepy's was a new tenant, authorized both a lettered sign on the Westerly facade, it says Sleepy's, The Mattress Professionals, below three gooseneck sort of lights facing out towards the Expressway, as you're southbound on the Expressway, and then allowed what had previously been a rotating or alternating set of LED sign messages for Kennedy Carpet, they changed to a single message of Sleepy's. And I think of note, the board -- that Sleepy's entered into the lease with then with Kennedy -- with the Kennedys after that vote in 2013. It was a December vote of 2013, and the lease was entered into in March of 2014. That's a lease that is for 10 years, it runs through 2024. And in 2016, last year, Falcone family bought the building and assumed the tenant. Sleepy's, a national mattress firm, was acquired by a larger company called Mattress Firm. And it's simply a change in the name of the tenant. There's no other change to the lease, to the obligations of the lease, to the obligations of the tenant or the owner. It's simply a recognition that it's now no longer known as Sleepy's, it's now Mattress Firm. Just like 7-Eleven recently acquired all of Tedeschi's, and the two Tedeschi's in Milton will soon be repurposed as 7-Elevens, there's no change to the underlying status of the entity in the building. It's simply a change to the, really, the name of the tenant, and the repurposing will be to go to the new look, if you will, of the tenant. So in this case, the request is to modify, simply modify, the names on the two facades. With respect to the facade on the left, within the same area, that Sleepy's, The Mattress Professionals is now says on the left would say Mattress Firm. That's highlighted here, it would not be backlit on the facade, still use the three gooseneck lights. And then on the LED sign on top, within the same area of the lettering of Sleepy's, would change to Mattress Firm with a swoosh under the firm. I think it's really that simple. The board reserved in its 2013 decision the right to review, a change to the sign based on change in ownership of the building, change in tenant, and change in any proposed change in the lettering of the sign itself. In this case, it's simply a change in -- there is a change in ownership, but there's a change of the building, but the tenant hasn't changed, it's simply a change in the recognition of the name of the tenant has changed, and so the name of the tenant ought to be properly identified now. You know, the board made, in accordance with the bylaw, the board has to make, you know, three findings under Section 3C5. One, that there's a reasonable need for the sign. In this case, the board, three times, recognized the need to advertise the business on the Expressway because of the unique location of the building itself. It is right off of the ramp, so the off-ramp from the Expressway just comes right in and right off, and this is almost the first building that you see, and there's the on-ramp goes that way. It is a business that is not so much a local walk-to-retail destination, like many of our other small retailers are in East Milton. The board recognized that this is a different circumstance. It's a building that's surrounded by offices, it's at the confluence of the off-ramp and the on-ramp from the Expressway and Granite Avenue so that it's unique. That found that it -- the board found that the business must be visible from the Expressway and that the sign is only visible from the Expressway, and the board found that by exempting from the standards, it would not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. In this case, again, the signs are only visible from the Expressway and from the city of Quincy. They're not visible within the town, so there's really, there's no sense that there could be a detrimental impact. And I think the board really is bound by its prior determinations, unless it can establish that there is some significant change in fact that would cause a change in those findings. And I don't, I can't think of one. So in that regard, I think that it is appropriate to request that the board confirm its prior findings, accept the notion that this is simply a change in identity for an existing tenant, and that that tenant needs to be properly identified as such. And so I'd ask the board to approve the request and open it to questions, obviously, that the board members may have. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Or Ms. Falcone, is there anything you would like to add?
Just that that sign creates the whole value of that building and that that tenant relies on that, and if we lose that tenant, it will not be good.
I have a question. Are the employees who work for Sleepy's continuing with Mattress Firm? And is, and number two, are there any changes to the business, or is it very similar, or is it not similar?
It's exactly the same. In fact, I went in today to walk around, I met the employee who was there, who's been with Sleepy's for five years. He's been sort of on a regional basis, but he's been with Sleepy's, he got absorbed into the Mattress Firm. His work conditions are the same as ours are the same, there was no change to the nature of his employment. And the way that the interior of the business is set out, there are still sleepy signage up within the inside of the building, that's still sort of turning over the decor of the interior of the building to reflect the name changes. But it is still a mattress wholesaler. They sell mattresses under their own brand and under other brands.
So as you said, it's just like an analogy with the 7-Eleven Tedeschi's?
Correct. Just -- And even to go more specifically, it would be like Edwards and Angel to Lock Lord. It's really that sort of a subsuming into a larger sort of entity.
Yeah, it looks like this was an acquisition rather than a merger. I think that's technically a little bit different, but that's why my question was, are the employees essentially the same? It sounds like they are. This person you cited, who's worked there for five years, has been at this location for at least two, three of those years, because this business has not been at the location for five years, so I assume it's, but it's someone who's been at this location for a while. Is that correct?
Yes, they, yes. He's been an employee of Sleepy's, now Mattress Firm, for five years. He's been at, he rotates between different locations, but he has been with them, and he was the guy working the store today, and he has been, but other than the change in the name, it is the identical, it is the identical entity.
Do we know that this has been an asset acquisition, or is it a stock?
That's what I took from Mr. Corcoran's memo.
Or is it a stock? Stock or stock?
We have a, there's a letter from, that was submitted to, actually, to J. Kennedy, as trustee for FAK Realty back in October, from Mattress Firm Holding Corp. This letter is to notify you that effective September 16, Mattress Firm Holding Corp, formerly rated on NASDAQ, merged with Stripes Acquisition Corp. Mattress Firm is the indirect parent company of Sleepy's LLC, which is the tenant under the real property lease for the premises located at 502 Granite Avenue. Effective 11/16, your new store code is such-and-such MRF Mattress Firm and its subsidiaries, including Mattress Firm Inc., Sleepy's LLC, and the Sleep Train Inc., will continue to operate all aspects of the business in North America following the merger. The group will be part of the Steinhaug.
That's, yeah, so that's different than what your memo had said about it being an asset acquisition, and that's, that is actually, I think, better facts for you even than what I thought your memo might have indicated. Do we have, do we have any other questions from the board? It is a public hearing, so we do want to see if there's any comments pro or con from the public, and our planning director is here, and he may want to provide information to us about the sign review committee and the planning board comments. So if we, do we have anything else from the board at this point, from Mr. Corcoran or Ms. Falcone?
I don't.
Do we have anyone from the public here who is here to speak in support of the application? Do we have anyone from the public who's here to speak against the application? Is that a letter? We do have a letter from one resident that came in that we should at least read into the record. While you're looking at that, Tom, why don't, I'll just --
I don't know when this was dated, whether it's a current --
It's current.
That was a current sign review committee?
Sign review committee, all right. Let me read in, we have a letter from Amiri Devlin, who wrote to the board, letter dated March 2nd, saying, and I'll paraphrase this and read as much of it as I can. "I am against any lit signage on the sign of the building at 502 Granite Avenue. Signage on the front of the building would be fine, however, I don't think a neon lit sign is necessary. I am also opposed to the signage that Mattress Firm is currently using on their back windows. While I am sitting on my deck or looking out over my kitchen window, it is not a pretty sight to see advertising for the company. I spent over half a million dollars for my home, and it is not very appealing to see, in quotes, 0.5% years, unquote, advertised on the three windows in the back of the building. It looks out of character for this neighborhood and doesn't really seem to serve any purpose regarding the selling of mattresses. There are signs in the front of the building. It would be appreciated if the signage on the rear windows were removed." And again, that's, she's a resident of Ballou Street, so a neighbor to the property.
Can I get an explanation of that? Because I wasn't aware of that, I guess.
I wasn't either.
It was emailed, I think, to the board, but let me pass it around the table. And she seems to be raising an issue, she does mention the roof sign, but she also mentions window signs.
The windows or what?
Is there any, can you speak to that? Are there window signs that?
There are, well, when I went today, so this is, this was a little harder to see, but, so, this is the Expressway, these are the LED sign on the top faces south, and ones on the, I think she's referring to signage on windows that face out to this small neighborhood in Quincy.
I think so, yes.
I did notice that there were some signs, placards over the door, within the windows back here. You know, when you're in the parking lot, sort of, there's a sign that sort of leads you into the building. I'm not sure that that's really of necessity on a relative basis, and so I think the notion of removing that sign, those signs, to be a little responsive, be responsive to the concerns being expressed would be appropriate. The real issue is the signs overlooking the Expressway that are significant to draw, obviously, to draw the traffic to the building.
Is it the consensus of the board that we would want to ask that the window signs be removed?
Yes.
Yes, so, okay. Meanwhile, something was passed up, and it's a memo from the sign review committee, which we do have a copy of, and Mr. Clark, would you like to join us at the table and tell us, perhaps you could summarize the memo that we received from the sign review committee and also the planning board's position?
The sign review committee did meet on this in January, the end of January. They support the sign on the west side of the building, which is the one with the three gooseneck lamps. They have, since day one, not liked the idea of the message board. They still stick with the issue of they don't like the message board, they don't want the message board. They don't feel it's in their, in their guidelines, and it's been up to this board to take and approve the message board, it's not them. The planning board did meet, they took no motion, no votes. Planning board feels that they have no part in lit signs. They feel that they may agree with the sign review committee, but the planning board has no legal part in sign approval. Moving forward, the planning board would like to say that no future lit message boards be approved. Planning board would like to ask for, should the sign be approved, that the sign be turned off on the overnight?
I thought we did.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, but
We do have those hours, right?
They are specific to that. Just as an aside to that, the planning board will be starting the process towards a new sign bylaw, starting this Thursday, for the October town meeting. So you'll see something end of August, beginning of September, in time for that meeting.
Okay. And the reason that the planning board's involved in this process is a couple of years ago, we had a moratorium article at town meeting, and the compromise that we made at that time was the selectmen and the planning board together said that we would address the concerns brought to us by residents who put the moratorium article forward as a citizens petition by holding hearings like this and inviting the planning board to weigh in, and the sign review committee obviously would weigh in in any event, but bringing any kind of an application for a lit sign to the board to have a public hearing. So we've noticed this in the newspaper, and we are conducting a public hearing. And in the past, the planning board has come to some of our meetings, or at least has given us a recommendation, so that's the reason we're asking the planning board for their input. But they're certainly correct that there's nothing requiring them to get involved in this, it's not, there's no bylaw requirement. Is there anyone else, someone came into the room, is there anyone else from the public who wanted to speak for or against the sign application? Seeing none. Why don't we close the public hearing? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, yep.
All in favor, just closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're into deliberation, and any discussion by the board?
Well, whether this is grandfathered or not, I guess I would like to know specifically if it is grandfathered or not, but it doesn't seem to me that there's any change in the use of the premises. Certainly, the sign permit is issued to the tenant, not to the building owner, so a change in the ownership of the building without a change in the tenant, I wouldn't think should matter. I don't know, I'm not, I'm an attorney.
Mr. Dennehy and I spoke with town council. He did look in, at our request, looked into the question of grandfathering, and believes the sign is not grandfathered, but there is, as Mr. Corcoran said at the beginning, there are the three prior decisions by this board for, first for Kennedy Carpet and then for Sleepy's, and to approve the existing sign. So it's not, it's not a grandfathered sign, but there, the sign is in existence and has been for quite some time, and the question, there has been a change in the ownership of the building, but the tenant is essentially the same tenant that has been operating the same business at the location.
Right, so there is continuity there, and
Yes.
The building owners are owners that we know and have done a lot of good work here in the town and have been upstanding and actually progressive in terms of helping out the East Milton, fabric of East Milton, so.
Right, and plus the fact, you know, Sleepy's entered into the lease predicated on the fact that, and they did enter into a ten-year lease, predicated on the fact that the sign would exist.
They did, they did. And I think the information that Mr. Corcoran read is actually probably a stronger case for the fact that it's essentially the same business under the same ownership. It's not just an asset purchase that Mattress Firm, they didn't just buy the mattresses and the inventory, they're actually acquiring the equity in the company. So I think that does make a difference. So we have a change in ownership, but not really in practice, not in substance or in practice, a change in the tenant here at this location. I understand the reasons that the sign review committee is not in favor of the sign. If we were looking at this right from the start, I really would probably not be in favor of voting for an LED sign on a roof.
I do too, and I'm generally opposed, I almost, I've been opposed to almost every one of, I think I've been opposed to every one of them, how's that? But I think that with this pre-existing, with three prior boards, with the fact that if it were Sleepy still, it still would be up there, and the current ownership, the ten-year lease, and all of those factors, that leads me to have a different opinion on this one.
Yeah, I agree, although I think, as we've said, we would like Mattress Firm and Falcone Company to take Ms. Devlin's concerns into account as to remove the window signs.
Absolutely.
We have not had, I'm not aware of any other, I have not received any other emails or phone calls from any member of the public, this, again, this has been noticed in the newspaper for hearing tonight, I believe it appeared twice in the Milton Times, and the only correspondence was from Ms. Devlin, so there have not been
I have not received any correspondence.
Anyone else received anything?
No, not.
Town council did a draft that he, working with the planning director, which, some of it is largely based on our prior, the board's prior votes. It does address the three points that Mr. Corcoran outlined, and that we have in the past weighed in on, in determining that there is a reasonable need for the sign, and that it would not be a substantial burden on the community. This, I guess the one thing that's a little bit different is that Sleepy's went to one color, this one would have two colors, one is the yellow line under the word Firm, but that's, at least it's not a flashing sign, it's not a rotating message, it's not a sign lit up like a Christmas tree, which is what we were complaining about with the prior Kennedy sign and
There's no difference to the wattage.
Sleepy's.
Yeah.
Sleepy's was a, it was a big improvement over the former Kennedy sign that flashed several messages in multiple colors. So we have a rather lengthy motion, if we're inclined, it sounds, it sounds to me as though we're inclined to support this. inclined, it sounds, it sounds to me as though we're inclined to support this.
Okay. I'll, I'll read it. "The Board of Selectmen finds that the owner has a reasonable need to retain the LED sign that faces northbound traffic on I-93 and to maintain the sign that faces southbound traffic on I-93 in order to attract the attention of customers and direct them to the store's location." That was number one. Number two, "The LED sign shall have only one message that reads 'Mattress Firm' in red letters against a black background. Neither the owner nor the tenant may advertise a different message on the LED sign, nor may they change the colors of the LED sign or rotate any other message at any interval, except that the owner and/or the tenant shall permit the town of Milton to display an emergency message on the LED sign if requested by the town administrator or chief of police. As requested by the Board of Selectmen's, February 11th, 2014 vote, the LED sign shall be dimmed at night, but the hours for the LED sign to be dimmed shall remain unchanged from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. each day." Number three, "Because of the uniqueness of the building's location and its non-residential immediate surroundings, there is a reasonable basis for granting an exemption from the standard set forth in Section 3(c) of the zoning bylaws in allowing a second sign to be placed on the building, subject to the following conditions. The Board of Selectmen finds that the granting of an exemption from the standard set forth in the zoning bylaws will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. The tenant is permitted to maintain the sign on the west facade of the building that faces I-93. Such sign will consist of plate letters pin-mounted, as shown on Page 3 of the renderings attached to the application. Sign shall read 'Mattress Firm' on one line. The proposed plate letters' pin-mounted signage will be installed on the west facade of the building. The words 'Mattress Firm' shall be printed in red with a yellow underline under 'firm.' The sign will remain the same size as the existing Sleepy sign which it is replacing. The signage on the west facade shall be lit from the above lettering by three gooseneck lamps. Lighting is allowed during normal business hours, however, such lighting must be turned off between 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. each day." And four, "Except as modified herein, the approval of the Board of Selectmen voted on May 22nd, 2008, as modified by the approval of the Board of Selectmen voted on November 3rd, 2011, and February 11th, 2014, shall remain in full force and effect. Any change in sign lettering or in the message advertised by a sign shall require prior, prior approval of the Board of Selectmen."
Do you have a second to the board?
I will second that.
Do you want to, or do voluntarily agree to address the issue of the other signs in the rear? I don't know if you wanted to incorporate-
I think we probably should incorporate that, yes.
Yeah. What do we, number five, is number five just direct the applicant to remove all window signs this week?
Facing the-
And, and on a going-forward basis?
All, all other signs visible from the outside.
No window signs should be-
Other than the other two.
Yeah. No window signs shall be, as we get in the minutes, no window signs shall be permitted. Does that work?
I guess so, yeah.
So, as an amendment to the motion?
Or signs visible from the outside of the building, I guess.
Signs, no, no signs visible from the outside of the building shall be permitted in the windows of the building. Agreeable?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Yes, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We are on to number six on our agenda. And the town accountant is here and is going to join us at the table.
Hi.
Hey, Amy, how are you?
Thank you, Bill.
Good, how are you?
Good evening, Amy.
Hi.
Back again.
All right, we were here to discuss the capital improvement planning committee's recommendations.
Yes, so you just want me to give you a quick-
What's the board's preference?
Summary?
Yeah, probably just a-
Quick summary?
Quick summary, yep.
Okay. The capital improvement planning committee has voted to approve a total capital recommendation of $4,707,119. Of that amount, the committee is recommending that the town treasurer be authorized to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $3,197,069 for recommended bonded capital items, and has recommended non-bonded capital items totaling $1,510,050, of which their recommendation includes the total of $760,050 is recommended to be funded from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash, with an additional $750,000 related to the LED streetlight project be funded through an appropriation from the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Just a couple of, I guess, to start from the end, the, the LED lighting project. We looked at that thing, actually, our town administrator presented it to the, to the capital committee. First, as a two-year project, but the, the payback appears to be so quick on it, less than a five-year payback in terms of just the, the electric savings and the savings in not having to change bulbs. I mean, virtually, they, they last a lifetime. And, you know, so just the maintenance. But just factoring in, in the electric savings and, and some of the incentives that are available just to do the conversion, it just made so much sense.
Well, I think, you know, to the town administrator's point that he's mentioned a couple of times, and we've talked about some of these capital projects or, or operational needs, there are efficiencies that you pay upfront for, but you see long-term savings. And I see this as being a huge one.
It certainly is. So, so we decided that it was a worthy project, and it, it didn't make sense to put it off over two years. We do have money in the Capital Stabilization Fund, not a ton of money. This will drag this stabilization fund down fairly low. But the thought process is, you know, that the initial dollars would be, the initial savings from that project would be returned to the Capital Stabilization Fund, I believe, what were we saying, over four years or five years?
Well, in the recommendation, I put within five years, but I believe, and Mr. Dennehy can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the rebates themselves, the incentive rebates are expected to be around $220,000 once all the lights are in.
Yep.
So within the first year, plus another, once they're all up and operational for a year, savings around $100,000 to $120,000.
Yeah, so in very short order, yeah, in very short order. But the initial, the first dollars would go to replenish the, the Capital Stabilization Fund, back to the original amount. And our recommendation was, and then some. You know, we can't per se, say interest, but, but to replenish a little more than was taken out of the stabilization fund. So that's one thing of note.
Can we stand that for a minute?
Sure.
Because I, I think this is a great idea that the town administrator put forward to do this LED lights. And we will get, from what I understand, we'll get long, lights are going to have a lo, very long lifetime. And we'll, we'll get these savings returned to us. I think there will be questions at town meeting about withdrawing money from the stabiliz, the Capital Stabilization Fund to use for this purpose. And so we're going to want to make sure that the, the comment in the warrant that the warrant committee writes is very clear that-
Sure.
The intent is to-
To replenish.
-replenish the Capital Stabilization Fund with these savings that we're going to generate. Make sure that this is an understanding among the warrant committee and all the, the different departments and boards that are involved going forward.
That is, 100% of the savings will-
Yes.
-go back into the stabilization fund until replenished.
Yes.
Sure, good point. The, the other thing of note in here is, if you look under the bonded, we are providing, we originally, for roads, a million dollars. That's the highest I think we've ever done.
Except for when we did Central Ave, the appropriation for Central Ave.
But the, I mean, the roads, the, our DPW director estimates that over $3 million annually is needed just to, to keep up with the roads and make some headway into the deterioration of, of our road infrastructure. So, this still isn't enough, but it's, it's, it's going in the right direction. So the capital committee felt fairly strongly that, that this was well-spent money. It will bring our debt service probably a little above the 1.9% that we've been-
Yes. So if this recommendation were to be approved by both this board and the warrant committee, we estimate that the non, the ratio of non-exempt debt service that we usually target at 1.9% would be approximately, well, right now, in 2018, it's about 2.09%. But this level of funding on the bonding side would increase that to approximately 2.66 in FY '20 and 2.52 in 2021. That small dip is just something must be coming off in 2021 as being fully paid. So, we do realize that it's above that initial target that we set, but that's not a formal target. That was just one that the committee was using. But with the level of capital requests, we felt it was necessary to make a recommendation in excess of that.
And then I think the only other thing of, of note would be DPW equipment, there is a bar, close to a half million dollars of trucks in there. And those are all, you know, larger, you know, three, I believe they're three-ton dump trucks, that, I believe they're all over 20 years old.
Yeah, he, the DPW director provided the capital committee with a list with the years. And the fleet of vehicles down there is so old. Several, several trucks, 20, I think there was even one that was 30 years old.
Yep.
So we are recommending replacement of the oldest ones. He's really asking for even more than that, but we picked replacing the three that are the oldest or in the worst shape or not operational or close to being not operational.
And we did get the generator that was World War II surplus. Literally it is. So, so we, we are recommending replacing that. And anything else, Amy?
The, the other thing I think is worth pointing out is I believe the Traffic Commission had had a request for some handicap signal accommodations at the library area, Adams Street, Elliott Street and Library Corner. So there is a recommendation to fund that at approximately a total cost of $55,000.
I have a question for you about the non-bonded, one of the items. It's, it, second from the last, it says parks, playground equipment for $112,000?
That's a playground plan's request.
That is the playground, okay, that was my question.
Yeah, that's a citizen's-
Is that what?
They requested 200, I think, but-
Okay. Because they, they've submitted a citizens petition.
Yeah.
So this is to address their citizens petition, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and that-
Deadly enough to allow them to get a match from Copland Foundation. That's why we did it at that amount. That's the amount we were told was, was necessary.
And that would go, I believe they're working on Shields now, and the next one would be Mary C. Lane.
Okay. So I guess we'll have to let the warrant committee know that, because I know that they were looking at the citizens petition. And you're designating this for free cash anyway. And I think, I know that they were looking at possible use of free cash for the playground planners. Okay, that answers that, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the capital budget?
The only other thing that I'd like to point out is some of these items that, on the third page, that start with facilities, facility schools, and facility, facilities town, on the non-bonded capital items, what normally happens with those is the warrant committee takes those, and that's like a one-time appropriation to consolidate facilities to get some of these projects done. But they always come in under the capital recommendation, but you might see those in the consolidated facilities article rather than in the article that's usually around Article 6 of capital. So it all depends how they prefer to present it in the warrant.
And many of these are truly repairs, not capital, but-
Those are the gym repairs that we see?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the capital budget? Anyone? If not, we have a motion to approve the capital budget.
Get to it. I can get to it here. See, I'll propose a motion to approve the FY 2018 capital needs recommendation of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee as detailed in its March 3, 2017 memo.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
And we are on to the budget. And Amy's going to stay, I believe, and join us at the table for this. Ask the town administrator to-
One, one week, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for having us tonight. One week further into the contingent budget, given 30,000-foot view last, two weeks ago. I presented to the warrant committee last week. They had some questions for us. Town accountant and myself have been refining our priorities. I'm not sure if, if you have a list of priorities for yourself, but basically, we, we took a look at the town side of, of the contingent asks. And we tried to prior, reprioritize them, or further prioritize them. And we kept a couple of things in, in note. Obviously, public safety. I heard their testimony, I think we all heard their testimony. I, I think they're very, very lean to add some staffing or backfill some staffing wages to make sure that the shifts are covered appropriately, so they can do their job, I think is, is one of the top priorities on the town side. Additionally, we, we identified some operational efficiencies. I know Selectman Burns had mentioned it earlier today, but I think a couple of these positions, the mechanic's position, the licensed craftsman's position over consolidated facilities, and the zoning code enforcement officer, these are positions that will immediately come in and save the town money.
Yeah, or not say, at least make a difference, you know.
Yeah. We've identified these efficiencies, this, this group over the past couple of years. And myself, in my three months here, I, I think that's some low-hanging fruit that we can just hit the ground running and, and start to build a better fleet. Obviously, the capital dollars for the older equipment is, is very necessary as well. But that's the way we work through the list. We, we can go through a detailed list or just kind of hit around on some topics. But, and Amy, feel free to jump in.
Yeah. Well, just if we could highlight the two changes that, after the warrant committee meeting last week regarding the contingent budget, it came to my attention that when this was put together, that there are separate articles, one coming through the town government study, committee recommendation for the chief procurement officer for $40,000, as well as, I believe there's a planning, or a master plan committee article. So I just inserted those and put them on the bottom of tier one, not knowing really where the board felt the priority those were. So this number did change from what was presented last week.
Yeah, we also identified, I think I mentioned it in the past, but I spoke with Randolph Town Manager, Dave Murphy, who has a conservation agent that works two days a week there. The $11,000 for conservation to come in and help the town with some of the intellect there surrounding any type of conservation issue, two days a week, I think is, is well worth it. Obviously, the state legislation issues, the public records law, municipal modernization act, they have an impact on day-to-day operations. I know Clerk Alvin's office is in need of, of some public records updating. There are some four years coming in that response time is much quicker than, than normal, and that needs to be addressed. I think that, that position would be addressed. I do see in the capital funding that there's some software that's to be purchased, non-bonded, possibly through free cash, that, that will help update that. We identified, we, we reprioritized and took out a couple of the FTEs we had asked for. When we presented to the warrant committee, it was, I believe there were 16 full-time positions back in January that, on the, on the, the broad ask from, from the departments. We, we got that number down to about 10 on the town side last week, and we've furthered that. We're probably looking at about seven or eight full-time employees on the town side. So significantly down from where we were when we presented in January.
Which of those, do we know which of those seven are you?
Um, there's another position in consolidated facilities, a maintenance assistant. We just felt that, that the craftsmen would, would provide a, a better bang for the, the dollar with respect to minimizing some of the, the private costs, or the cost to privatize that. And then the library assistant, we felt that the reference and technology librarian might be a better fit over there at the library. But there are a couple. The Assistant Town Administrator here in the office, I'm still trying to work through the logistics on what- the logistics on what will help this office run a little bit more efficiently, and I'm not sure that that priority at this time is nearly where some of these other positions would be.
So if I could just, just, you know, just follow up on a couple of the things that you talked about. You know, obviously, the town clerk with the way that there's been changes, there's a great need, obviously, for support there. I mean, I think everybody knows that with, you know, having people, voters be able to vote two weeks in advance now, and there's no question about that. Consolidated facilities, you hit on that. No question, again, we get back to the efficiencies. We talk about, you know, when you hire a person for X amount of dollars, I'll just throw out a figure, say it was $60,000, you're getting, that's being paid for after over a year and a half, two years, because you're not paying prevailing wages, and these people are out there, you know, they're getting the job done within. The library, programs are booming, you know, Will needs help, and, you know, I can, I'm speaking for the residents out there. You know, God forbid we ever had any closures, you know. That's a place where people go to be educated and to read and to help, you know, further their studies, and for seniors, you know, they depend on that, you know, on a daily basis. The Council on Aging, no different. I think the Council on Aging, it needs support. You know, we've got a different generation of seniors now, more active, their age, their, as they age, they're still young, or they're younger as they age, and we need to be able to provide these resources and opportunities for them. So, and then, and then I want to get to public safety, and, you know, you know, if you heard Jack Grant talk the other night, you know, 70 firefighters are where they should be. They're at 52, okay? They don't have the ability to put a ventilation team, a water team, and an action team that goes in, a search and recovery team, at the same time because of the way they're staffed. Police, they have three approved positions that they can't fill. What have they accomplished over the last several months? Nothing but incredible acts, you know, in terms of stopping carjacking, you know, they're faced with bank robberies. They need, you know, we need a drug unit with the opioid crisis, you know, happening. We have, we have people that travel through our town, and they do a tremendous job. And, you know, we're lucky that we have great schools. People will move to this town because we have great schools, but people move to this town because we have great public safety as well. And there are seniors that depend on that public safety, and families within the school system that depend on it. So we have some great needs here collectively, and, you know, and I guess I put a plea out there to people to recognize the value in these positions that you've discussed.
So do we have a definitive list that we are going to come up with of what the, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of the same things from you and, from Mike and from David and from Amy. It sounds like we're all in agreement, the patrolmen, the overtime that the fire chief prioritized was important, the craftsmen. We were talking, the consolidated facilities leave a craftsman and the maintenance assistant, and what I'm hearing the town administrator saying is we prioritize the craftsmen in the contingent budget?
Yeah, I think I heard the warrant committee correctly last night. They, they were kind of leaning towards a little bit of a lower number.
Yes.
When we sat down today, we were looking towards where we could cut to get that number to, I think they mentioned 3.5 or 3.6, one of the committee members last night. So that was our intention today, to just keep that Tier One list that we had forwarded to you last week and just work off that and see if we had to trim some of that down to get that, the override number to, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars less, what would it take from the town side, keeping all these, these mantras and operating procedures in place.
So it sounds like it's the maintenance assistant, the, one of the library positions that we would not be looking to prioritize?
Yeah, and again, this is, this is for discussion here tonight, and anything that you, you also, that might stick out to you that I hadn't been able to mention. Yeah, the assistant town administrator position, I'm still not sure what the office needs up here. I know it's a very busy place this time of year. It's, it's very, very busy with, with the time and dedication that goes into preparing the budget, two budgets going on this year, but just can't quite put my finger on what the office needs at this time, and if, if an assistant town administrator is in fact what the office needs, or if it, if it, there's a different dynamic that needs to go in there. So I, we could take that off of Tier One unless someone here thinks it's more of a priority.
I'm just...
I guess it's a concern.
I was gonna say, I'm just concerned about you as the town administrator who's got now some new responsibilities and authority under the legislation. We want to be sure that there's adequate staffing to assist you. That was, I think that's just the concern, because if it's not in this budget, it's going to be hard to get it into a succeeding year's budget, whether it's the, whether that's the title or it's some other position, that's just the concern that I have.
I have a concern because, you know, you know, he's wearing many hats, okay? And I think that operationally, this town is booming in many ways, and I think that there's a great need for him to have someone who can operate, you know, under his guidance and, and work with department heads while he is working on other town issues, you know, and, you know, obviously, he would be working with those department heads on a regular basis, but I think that there's a need. I think that, you know, residents expect services when they pay for these services, when you go to an override, you expect, you know, the delivery of the services. And in order to, you can't ask and then not deliver, and I think that you, he needs the support within. This is a very lean office. To be honest with you, when I worked in the town of Westwood, I mean, the city of Boston's a whole different animal, obviously, but it is, it is, it pales in comparison to the town administrator's office there, and that's, that town is 14,000 people, and it's highly functional.
Yeah, and in this town, it's dwindled over time. And the town, the selectman's office always had more personnel. You go back 15 years, it was a larger staff than it currently is, and that's a result of a lot of lean budgets and years when we've been level dollar.
I think the key, though, is, and I, I think it's greatly needed, I think the key is for Administrator Denny to identify the actual role that would benefit the administration, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
In what capacity.
Yeah.
I agree.
We are very, very lean. I mean, if you go on to the DOR's website, you can pull comparison reports from as many different towns as you want, and I've done it a few times, looking at the, the administration in this town, either as a percentage of the total budget or just as a straight dollar percent, dollar number from town to town, and, and we are very lean.
And if we go back a few years to the DOR model, which the town government study committee is still working at and aiming towards, was to have the TA at the top, and then the assistant town administrator for human resources, which we currently have, and then an assistant town administrator for finance, which we haven't been able to do yet. That was, that DOR report came about three or four years ago, and since then, the former town administrator identified a need to hire not just an ATA for finance, but someone who's more operations, almost like, you know, kind of the, someone who'd be the chief operating officer, for lack of a better term, for the, for the town, which is something that prior town administrators had. When Emery Fagan was the assistant town administrator, so the prior town administrator, she'd spend half of her time working on human resources with the personnel board, and half of her time doing projects for the town administrator, whether it was night meetings, whether it was working on insurance issues, different things, and I know her perception was that that was lacking in the last couple of years. She just didn't have the support in the office that other, in the resources that other town administrators had. So that's the reason she put the request in. But I would agree with David, we certainly want the current town administrator to make his own determination of what the needs in the office are. I'm just, I guess I share Tom's concern and your concern, David, that we, we just want to be sure we've got the right resources in place for you, Mr. Denny, to, you know, to be able to get down all the things that are on your plate.
Well, I appreciate your self-assess in giving it up off of that. I think that, you know, you know, to enhance other areas, it's, it's like the old adage, when you're in the airplane, if you don't take care of yourself, you're not going to be able to take care of everybody else. So I think that you need it. Having worked in government for a long time, I see the value in it, and again, that's another efficiency. You know, it's gonna, it's gonna be able to allow you and your department heads to, to manage down, you know, and I think that's appropriate.
Well, thank you for your support with that. And my thought process was, you know, there's probably, you know, the Council on Aging might need that funding a little more than the town administrator's office or Selectman's office, and that was the message that I was trying to keep with that, but I, I understand.
We also have the procurement officer, which the study committee is recommending be funded as a part-time position in their ballpark. Their request was $40,000. The warrant committee last night approved the article, which we'll talk about a little bit when we get to that articles on our agenda, but they backed the dollar amount out of it because they wanted to wind that into this contingent discussion. And then, of course, the question for them is, can it even be funded in the non-contingent budget? So they, they asked that, that the town administrator consider whether that would make what he's calling the Tier One on the contingent budget. So what is the sense of that? What's the board's sense of that position?
I think it's, again, another one of those that really should add some efficiency to town government. So I think it is, you know, I've always thought that centralized procurement is a necessity for the town, and if that's one step towards centralized procurement, which it really is.
I totally agree.
And it helps ensure that we're in compliance with state law, which is important.
Yes. Well, actually, the, the way it's written, if you read 30B, it's, if you want to write contracts over $50,000 and have them not go out for a formal bid, then you need a chief procurement officer. Otherwise, you're precluded from doing that. You can't have a negotiated or a request or proposal type of, you know, procurement for a contract above $50,000 without a CPO. But, you know, just the decentralization of it, somebody looking over, making sure that we have 30B compliance with everything we do, making sure that in, you know, the state bid, the state list isn't always the best price, you know.
Well, and this position would cover both the schools as well as the town side.
That's practice.
So one of the questions was, is a part-time position enough? And I know that was a concern of Mr. Denny and Ms. Dexter, but the study committee feels that a part-time position is all that's needed because personnel in the school department, probably the assistant superintendent, would still be involved in a lot of the purchasing. It would be review of the purchase orders and compliance with state law that the CPO would do.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, and it really would be the larger procurement. It's not, you know, it's not, you know...
And the over $5,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing I would add is, I heard the town government study committee loud and clear last night about purchase orders with the new software technology. Yeah, the application of purchase orders, and this, I see, both myself and the town accountant see the CPO being that person that, you know, checks the box for purchase orders and makes sure they're executed and contracted, funds are encumbered and appropriated, and then disencumbered at the end of the year.
Right.
And, and that's a necessity, I think.
We have some other items in here that are not personal related, such as an increase in the law budget by $50,000. There was a question about that at the warrant committee meeting last night, and, you know, we tried to explain that it's because we've got a lot of litigation going on at any given time, and our law budget has increased, and we've got some, you know, we have one, at least one significant case, which is town council defending the Board of Appeals on the Randolph Avenue development, proposed development. There's other litigation going on, and there's, at any given time, that will vary a little bit from year to year, but the costs have been increasing. We've got other things like forestry in, in this request, which I'm guessing is trees?
Yes.
You know, that's also in the capital budget.
Yeah, I believe it's $20,000 in the capital budget, non-bonded.
Yes. But I guess forestry is different than trees. You gotta be careful when you use that terminology, because the way that, or DPW...
That's why I'm asking, because we listed it as trees in the, in the contingent, but in the, sorry, the capital budget. Forestry, I know sometimes means removing the trees, but not necessarily replacing.
Correct, right.
Is it, do we know, is this 30,000 in the contingent budget? Is that for new trees?
I can check with Director Lynch.
Okay.
Probably the latter. It's probably pruning of, you know, trees that came down. Last Thursday, we had an inundation of trees that came down with the high winds.
There was 20,000 in the capital for new trees.
Yes.
That is new, that is new trees.
That is new trees.
That's replacement, yeah.
Excuse me. Can I just point out a couple of things? In Tier One, the law amount requested was actually 75, so this board may not agree with splitting that, so that's something you should consider, because 25 of it's in Tier Two, so that you may want to change back to the 75. As well as the roadways, that was actually 250, and we split it 100 and 150 between the two tiers, so you might want to look at that. And, and then this other master plan committee, one that's a separate article that was recently added. Those...
Is that in Tier One, the master plan? I'm looking at the list from a week ago.
It wasn't on the list from a week ago because we weren't, you know, it wasn't on our radar, so I just threw it on the bottom of Tier One, just so that it would be discussed tonight, to make sure we didn't miss it.
Should we talk about roadways? So we're, it's currently at $100,000, which would be the article for the roadway stabilization fund, so it would be 100,000 every year going into that.
Right.
Is that number something that we're comfortable with in the contingent budget as the Tier One request?
The same thing, anything helps. Even 250 isn't enough, you know, so who knows? I think 100's better than nothing. You know, if, if it makes the difference in, you know, in getting a more palatable number, I guess so be it, but, and it will go up by two and a half percent every year, but, you know, it passes.
Anything else on this Tier One list? Some things that are in, and the warrant committee made pretty clear that it's highly unlikely that Tier Two or Tier Three will ever be reached, so there are a number of items that are important things that are, didn't make the Tier One cut, and if there's anything that we would want to revisit, this would probably be the right time to do that.
And we revisited today and didn't see anything that, you know, our Tier One priorities on the most recent sheet are pretty much what we felt.
If we look at just what's on the Tier One plus the schools, Tier One, what do we have for dollar?
With the insurance estimate for, you know, new people?
Yeah, you have to, I have to consider that, that's got to be part of it.
So that's 236,000, so the total would be 3,978, and I believe that the warrant committee was talking about a much lower number than that.
Last night, yes. So I, I know that's what you were, I thought you were going to give us a lower amount because you've been working on it, I know, today to revisit it, and you've cut some of the Tier One out.
Well, what, what they requested, I believe, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we make sure this prioritization is...
Even within Tier One is...
What the board is, because we presented it without the board's approval.
Right.
What, the order of things that the board...
In Tier One.
Would like to see it in Tier One, that way if they decide on a lower number, they will just basically...
Go from the bottom up.
Go from the bottom up. So they didn't actually ask us to cut the number down, but they asked us to reprioritize it, because we were focusing more on the tiers and then the top, like five items. So there's probably things we want to move up, but we were hoping to get some input from this board to make sure that everybody was on the same page with that before we...
Do we still have the two patrolmen and the fire overtime in the Tier One?
Yes.
Okay.
And a little bit of police backfill wages.
Overtime for the police, yeah. The 96-60 number.
Okay, and the fire chief prioritized the overtime, the new term you're calling, I know it's backfill staffing, well, just explain that overtime is not just optional or a supplement or a luxury, it's something that's, provides firefighters on trucks on a, to keep as much staffing as...
Someone takes a day off, he's got to backfill.
Yeah, or is it injured or...
It's not really overtime, it's...
Right. I mean, I think the warrant committee had a valid question, I'm not sure really getting answered, but, you know, because there is, even in the, the contingent budget, there's no provision to put a frontline firefighter in that budget. What would that do to overtime if you were to add a firefighter? Because we are so low on firefighters.
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that, but...
Right, and keep in mind...
Would there be a need for the increased backfill if you added another firefighter?
And even the chief said that really the overtime was a greater priority for him than the, the training lieutenant position, which is in Tier Two, so that's, at least we're consistent with what his request was.
Yep.
And then if it was to be another firefighter rather than an increase in the backfill, then you need to take insurances into consideration also, so it probably would be around...
Thirty percent that goes with that or so, yeah, I know.
So, I mean, it sounds to me like we're wasting support for the, in the public safety realm, the two patrolmen, the overtime for the fire... So, I mean, it sounds to me like we're wasting support for the public safety realm, the two patrolmen, the overtime for the fire department.
Yes.
The smaller overtime amount for the police, but also the craftsmen, the town clerks, some assistance for the town clerk, whether it's full-time or part-time. The council on aging reorg, some position in this selectman's office to provide additional support to the town administrator, maybe a different title or a different, maybe part-time or full-time, but some additional support there.
Another item to note is number 17. The line item for consolidated facilities for building repairs and maintenance of 100,000. Over the last three, four, five years, every year, we ask for approximately, I think the last couple of years, it was 78,500 for repairs for that department. And we usually fund that out of free cash, which is becoming the norm. So that's something that should be considered to roll into the operating budget of that department. He needs more funding to properly do the work and not rely on one-time funds every year, hoping that they're there in order to maintain the buildings and really keep them in good shape before they deteriorate.
Yep, I agree.
Most of the town departments don't have their line, that line embedded in their budget, so it's not something.
Left a long time ago, yeah. It was one of the first things that kind of leaves the budget, is repair maintenance.
Now, we do have some items for library and parks and cemetery in this tier one, which are, you know, the challenge is always they're under different boards and they're all elected boards and the town administrator works with them and they're department heads. So I'm assuming that's taking place and you're having the discussions with, whether it's Will Adamsick or Dave Bertios or the Terice, the different people involved in those departments to keep them in the loop as to what you're recommending. All right, is there anything else on the budget that we should go over tonight?
No, I think Amy is right, though, that we should really work on the prioritizing of tier one.
Even if we looked at, maybe if you don't prioritize everyone, but if we can get an agreement.
Clock out bottom half.
I think from what I heard tonight, the top 11 were definitely ones, maybe that we're all on the same page for moving the additional public safety and efficiencies up as well as the CPO. And maybe look at what the bottom five would be or something like that to make it a little bit more manageable because whatever's on the bottom of tier one is what's going to be looked at to get cut first. So I guess it doesn't matter as much if something's number one versus number five, right? It matters if it's number 30.
Thirty-five, yes, correct.
Right, and that's what the warrant committee is going to be looking for a list for tomorrow night. So if there's anything that we think should come off tier one, this would be the top.
I don't think there's anything that should come off it necessarily, I mean, but I agree that the public safety and the efficiency items are the things that should be on the top.
I agree about the top 11, and I don't have your list of the lower five, but if it includes a CPO and the master plan committee, that makes sense.
So to keep them in the lower five or?
I think CPO should.
No, to bump them up.
To bump the, in the master plan at the full 50? I just don't have a clear understanding of what that is.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so those would move up, those two. I think we had had conversations that perhaps the second position in the library would move more to the bottom of tier one.
And the maintenance and the consolidated facilities also, correct?
That could move down, I mean, we could, if it meant.
That I heard, I thought I heard that earlier.
The craftsmen being the more important of the two positions.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yes, the maintenance assistant, sorry.
Maintenance assistant.
I thought you meant his $100,000.
No, no, just his second person, yeah.
All right, so maintenance assistant.
The warrant committee also last night brought up, they had a question about snow and ice that they had asked once previously. They wanted to know whether that should be adjusted and what's the town administrator's thoughts on that? Are we good at where we are?
We did some research last week currently, and last year was appropriated $150,000. Ironically, both fiscal years, both at the time we presented the information, and at the end of last year, it was roughly 350,000. So it is underfunded. It's, you know, it probably requires a significant reserve fund transfer at the end of the year. My question back to you is if we do increase that to a more 2017 number, can we then bring it back down?
Got to come out of somebody else, yeah.
Right, or can we, can we bring it back down to 150 if we have a couple of mild, very mild winters or?
I don't believe so.
I think that's the problem, that is the problem.
Yeah, once you go up, I think you're stuck with it being at that level. And that's why I believe that we've been hesitant to do that, especially in the trim budgets that we've had to balance over the last couple of years. But if there was the feeling that it should go up now, would be the time to do it.
Yeah, and I would, if that's the case, I would recommend running five-year average or something. Some type of verbiage that, you know, captures the winter of 2015, but also captures last winter and just kind of tries to average them out.
I would agree with that.
In the non-contingent budget, are we just really taking money out of other pieces of the DPW budget to fund that? So maybe a small increase, but not a substantial increase? And then we don't run the risk of being stuck with a larger number than we need in a year where we might have no snow at all?
I believe too, like, the last couple of years, well, last year was mild, but the really bad winter, we had some efficiencies in other departments. So we were able to absorb much of that deficit through transfers from other departmental appropriations and things like that. Can't always rely on that. But I believe it's never been 150 or less since I've started anyways.
I think just to fill the sand and salt bin is 150, so.
Right.
Is that one that we can use the 3% transfers at the end of the year for? Which now has changed under the Modernization Act, but is that something we've been able to use 3% transfer for in the past?
Yes.
So that gives us another avenue to address it.
And it can be, it can be run at a deficit and carried over to the next year. That's the other advantage of keeping the snow and ice lower. But, you know, it does give you that flexibility, that's all, in tight budgets.
But their question is valid.
Yes.
You know, and we looked at the numbers and it proves their point that it's undefinable.
It's undefinable, yeah, there's no question.
Anything else on the budget before we move on? Anyone?
Nope.
Is this, have we waited enough in terms of agreeing with a lot of your priorities to give you enough information for the warrant committee tomorrow evening?
So, once we go and make the revisions tomorrow, I assume that perhaps we could email it to make sure we interpreted everything that was discussed here properly?
Yeah, that sounds great.
We'll be presenting tomorrow night, so.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Before we go on to the warrant articles, we do have a number of people here and I'm assuming that they're here for the Bent's common vic license. So why don't we take that item out of order and go on to number 12 and then we'll come back to the warrant articles? So number 12 on our agenda, we have Bent's, and I see Attorney McGetrick is present and others who are here, I'm guessing are here for this. If anyone is with you, Marion, if you'd like to bring them to the table and introduce.
Hi, Marion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see everybody.
Good seeing you.
How you doing?
I'm Marion McGetrick and I'm here to represent both Falcone's, who are the current owners of the Bent's building. They've just purchased it. And Pia Sullivan and Larry Mondine, who have just entered into a lease agreement with Falcone's to become the operators for the Bent's Cafe, which is the Bent's Cafe that's been there for, since 1995. But these, every time you have a new operator, you need a new vic license, common vic license. In addition, Pia Sullivan and Larry Mondine, this is, they're forming an LLC to do this. They are going to be operating it as a new enterprise. They have to go through a number of steps in order to be properly licensed, in order to have, they have their, you know, their tax ID number now, they're getting a bank account, they're having to work with the Board of Health on what they need for their health permit. They're not planning, Falcone's is not currently contemplating renovations of any substance in this area of the building or any area until they take care of some other issues that they have to deal with. So I just wanted to start out with a little introduction. I did give you a letter last week, which is basically just a summary of the existing permit. So each of you should have a copy, but I brought copies tonight. Did you get a copy of this?
I probably did, but.
Yeah, we did.
All right, I have copies, I'll just pass them around so you can look at them. I'm not going to go through every detail of that, but, let me just a sec. Okay, I'll talk while I find it. Okay, so the history of Bent's is very interesting and I'm not going to go on at length, but I think it might be of some interest to you as well as to people who are listening. Bent's Bakery is a business that's been in existence since the early 1800s. It's a really old Milton institution. It wasn't originally located where it is now. It was actually on Highland Street where there's currently, there's now a house. But the families that owned the Bent's, and it wasn't called Bent's all along, but the families that owned this business were basically the same families from the early 1800s. Their names changed because, you know, a father-in-law or son would take over. And finally, maybe 45, 50 years ago, the Parati family became involved. They were related too. So all these people who operated this business had a family relationship. And it was a bakery business, bakery, not a cafe originally. They made, as you all probably know, hard tack or hard crackers, common crackers. And these are crackers that are sort of famous because they were, you know, soldiers during the Civil War used them and then in later wars, they're used because they're extremely indestructible. Some people think they're delicious, you know, but in any case, it's of historic interest that those crackers continued to be manufactured until very recently in the old ovens in the Bent's building.
Will that continue?
Not, I don't know. I'm not going to promise that. The old oven facility, which is on the second floor, is in poor shape. If it were to continue in some fashion, it would have to be moved to the first floor. I doubt that the historic ovens are going to be able to be continued. There are a lot of safety issues. Falcone's are reviewing everything in that building right now. But I don't want to speak to what's going to happen with the rest of the building right now because they really need to do a lot of work before they decide what can be done there. This building was built about 1900 and it's been there ever since. So this is the oldest manufacturing facility, in fact, one of the few in Milton. And it's of a lot of historic value for that reason. So the younger Parati in 1995 was an up-and-coming person who was really interested in the food business and he convinced his father to let him apply to open a small cafe on the first floor. That required returning to, back to the Board of Appeals because this was a pre-existing, non-conforming business use. But in order to introduce a new type of use or a change in the way the facility was used, they needed a special permit and they did get that special permit. It had a lot of conditions, which I summarized for you in the, this, which I haven't given you, apologies. Here it is. There you go. Pass those around, sorry. And that's just kind of to read at your leisure. The reason that summary of special conditions from the 1995 special permit is important is that those establish all of the operating conditions for the cafe. And they have not changed, except that in 1999, Jim Parati went back and said, "I would like permission for outdoor seating." There is no seating authorization for the cafe, except that in 1999, the Board of Appeals agreed to allow outdoor seating in front of the cafe, thanks. And it was supposed to be a two-year permit. The building changed hands several years later, nobody came back, but they went back in 2009. The Board of Appeals kindly agreed to reissue the amendment to the special permit, which allowed the outdoor seating. That was for four years until 2014, at which time the owners came back timely and renewed again. So the current existing permit from 1995 is still good. It wasn't time limited. The permit, the amendment for seating outdoors is good through 2019.
Was there indoor seating?
No, there is, there is a few seats inside and people who come to buy their sandwiches sit down there. But there is not officially authorization for indoor seating at that cafe. And it's a very small space, so you've probably been in there to buy sandwiches. It's been rearranged a few times with counters in different places. So there's been more or less floor space available. But it's basically, in the summer, it's a place where you can sit down and eat outside. In the winter, it's a place where you go and you buy your sandwiches. Most people take them back to their offices or home. So in addition to seating limitations, the permit identifies where the parking is, including along the side of the building. It describes the types of foods that will be permitted to be sold. It describes that this will be basically a sandwich business and a pastry and bread bakery type of operation. That part of the operation, the bakery, remained as authorized because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming business use and still continues today. The cafe part is under the special permit. But from the common vic license perspective, it's important to understand that all of those limitations come with a special permit. So the applicants can't ask for any more hours than they were allowed in that special permit, which I believe are in the permit at 6:30 to, it's all listed in there, so I don't want to.
Seven thirty to six.
Seven thirty to six during the week and then eight to six on Saturday, no Sunday hours. If the new operators wanted to have Sunday hours, they could come back, but they need to go back to the Board of Appeals. And my recommendation, I think they mentioned that in their follow-up memo, is that that would be the first thing they would do and then they would come back and ask you for an amendment if you had granted a common vic license based on the existing hours. In their application, I think they named slightly narrower hours. And that's fine, if you're limited to those hours, you'll have to stay with the application. I didn't review it beforehand, I probably would have recommended they just stay with the hours that are in the special permit. Not that they're necessarily going to be open for those hours, but it's not a problem. They, they've asked for the hours that they need. So that's what you should be considering, whatever came in the application. I just want to say briefly that Falcone Companies has purchased this building because they are very, very interested in the history of the building and they want to preserve the building. They want to find ways to use it economically so that it can produce enough income to maintain the building in good condition and keep it looking in its historic aspect. You know, in around, I don't know, it was around 2003, it might have been even earlier, this building actually was accepted for placement on the National Register of Historic Places. And I remember being there when Ted Kennedy arrived in his big limousine to, you know, sort of grant the status to the building. And it was, it was a big deal and kind of special. I don't think there are a lot of places around here like that. I did bring tonight, not anything I'm going to talk about, I'm going to leave it for your file, but this is a very interesting description of all of the history of the building, going back to the early 1800s bakery use and where it was. And you may or may not ever have occasion to look through it, but it'll be in the file and it should be there. I also gave Barbara the copies of all of the special permits. So you have those in your file. If you actually want to read the permits rather than my summary, you have them. You have received, I think, a couple of sample menus. Those really get reviewed, especially by the Board of Health, I think. But they're there for your information and they're just kind of a sample of what might be the menu. I mean, this is a very, you know, it's a small cafe, from day, one day to one week, the menu's likely to change because you're going to find out what's successful and what isn't. And that's happened over the last 15 years too. So that kind of is summary for me. I didn't know whether, Pia asked me to review for her what they would need to do in order to become an operating business and in order to hold the lease. And there were many steps involved. And I think that you've currently, if I'm, if I'm correct, you know, you have your tax identification number, you've applied to the Secretary of State for your incorporation, to become an LLC. You've met with the Board of Health and there was a number of steps you now have to go through. There's training that your staff has to have, that's all Board of Health jurisdiction. If they, for example, want to put in a new oven, they might need a new electrical permit and they have to go to the, to the building department to get that. It's not currently anticipated that they have to get any building permits other than that because they're not doing reconstruction of that interior space. But they understand that they would have to. And also Falcone Companies would be the applicant. have to, and also Falcone Companies would be the applicant for that renovation, actually, rather than the tenant, but they would coordinate. So, if you were to grant a, a common VIC license, it would be conditioned on obtaining all necessary permits, required permits to operate the business other than this license. We're happy to provide more detail if you- I just wanna say a couple of things about Pia Sullivan, and particularly, she's not all by herself, Larry Mondine isn't, they're not out here as somebody who's never, knows nothing about the restaurant business. Pia Sullivan is the pastry chef currently at Novara, and, um, in both restaurants, actually, and he's Milton, and she's, she knows Vance Welch very well. He's kind of there, he's, he's been in these businesses for years, he's there to provide advice and support if they need it. She didn't undertake this without getting that type of commitment for help. But I think the idea of somebody who has the pastry chef and baking background is terrific, because one of the fondest features of Bents for me has always been their good bread and their good cookies and baked goods. So, I hope that continues. So, I thought it was a pretty good fit, but you may have other questions that you wanna ask.
Well, so now I know where all those wonderful desserts come from in Abbey Park in Novara.
So, and one other thing I forgot to mention is that the two chefs at both of those restaurants, one of them is your sister, I believe?
One's my sister and one's my brother, yes.
Right, so that's an additional relationship. This is a family that's already connected to the restaurant business, but this is a new enterprise for them, so they're looking forward to it, and I hope they'll, you'll approve the permit.
Yeah, not only the restaurant business, but the restaurant business in Milton, so they have an understanding of what, of what the town is like and what, what people's interests are, and a little appreciation for the building.
Lots of support.
Yeah, no, Bents is a great Milton institution. It'd be nice if you can save those water crackers, but that may not be possible based on the condition of the ovens, huh?
I don't know about that. They might not be able to be produced by the ancient historic ovens, that's the best I can say, and then we'll have to see, but that's really not known at this point.
Okay. On the question of indoor seating, so it sounds as though if that were, if you were to seek indoor seating, you'd have to go to the Board of Appeals to amend the special permit. I, I thought that the prior operator-
They were, they did have indoor, they did.
They had some comfortable chairs, and they had a high-top table, I thought, that people did sit in at the restaurant.
They do have seats.
At the restaurant, the cafe.
But it's not a restaurant where people are served at a table.
You weren't being served, no.
And in fact, well, my usual way of visiting is to buy a sandwich, and that's the most
common. People might sometimes sit in one of those seats for a few minutes. It's just not, it's not really set up, and it isn't really permitted for indoor seating. I wanna just point, say to you that I think we all recognize that it would be nice if they had an indoor seating setup, even a small one, but the issue at Bents is parking, and this is something Falcone Companies is going to look into and attempt to address by providing more parking in a, in a way that will probably require additional permitting. It's not something that everyone is ignoring, so that's why this application is strictly for the way the business is currently conducted, and if there is to be, I mean, you know, you could, for example, come back to the Board of Appeals and say, "Well, you less have, whatever it is, twenty-four seats outside in the summer, so that means the parking capacity supports twenty-four seats. How about, you know, a few seats indoors in the winter, since we don't use the outdoor seating?" That could happen, and that would be within the current constraints, but still has to go back to the Board of Appeals. It can't be approved by you.
Right.
And it would have to be approved by you afterwards, probably, but the Board of Appeals needs to address that.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments? I know Mr. Welch's name came up, and he's here in the audience. I don't know if he was pointing, coming up to speak in support, or if anyone from the Falcone Companies who are here, is there anyone else who wanted to address the board in support of this, or in relation to this application? Oh. Yes, Mr. Welch, would you like to come up to the microphone, please, so you can be heard on television?
I'm Vance from Abbey Park in Novara. I just wanna give my strongest recommendation for Pia and Larry. They've worked with us for a long time. Pia's our executive chef's sister, so they're gonna have plenty of support from the restaurants in anything that they do. I mean, we're all, we've all worked together for a long time, and this is a great opportunity for Pia and Larry, and we just, we'll support it and help them in any way we can.
That's great.
That's super. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
I don't.
Anything else, Ms. Sullivan, or Attorney McGetrick, that you'd like to add?
Anything else?
Thank you, pretty much. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the story as it is right now. This is, this restaurant's not gonna open tomorrow. There's still work with the Board of Health, and there's still various steps that have to be completed, and just cleaning up the interior is what's going on right now, and that's taking some time.
No major renovations, just kinda sprucing up what's there.
Some painting, and things like that.
Do you have any estimate on when it might open? Is there a timeframe you're looking at right now?
That's the goal.
We should refer to it first.
Okay, that's pretty quick.
That's great.
I'll move to approve a common vehicle license to Bents Cafe DBA, Bents Cafe LLC, located at Seven Pleasant Street, contingent upon the applicant meeting all requirements set forth by the Board of Health and any other departments requiring inspections.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Very much.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so why don't we go back to number eight on our agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Regarding the warrant articles. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
So, we have, we need to reopen and close the warrant, because we have some changes we had previously discussed withdrawing the alcohol sales tax article that we submitted. Personnel, I mean, I'm not the personnel board, the Town Government Study Committee would like us to withdraw their article that they had submitted regarding the personnel board, that, with the intent of putting that forward until October.
October, that makes sense.
The planning board has substituted two, their two art, their two zoning articles, one involving the Great Estates, including the Carberry Estate.
Yep.
The other one, the planned unit development for the Parkway or the Ice House. They submitted them, and we don't like this term placeholder articles, because when articles come in, they're supposed to be in final form, but, you know, both of these are very substantial projects for Milton, and have involved a lot of community input, and the planning board has spent an awful lot of time on them, went through a long process. They've now substituted out, as a result of public hearings, they've made a lot of changes to the text of the articles. They wanna withdraw the original articles and substitute them with the two new articles that we've received copies of, that they, that they've recently had the public hearings on. Because they're new articles coming into the warrant, they're now going to have to have a public, another public hearing on these new ones, which they'll go and do. And then the other one would be to add what Brian Furst, Chair of the Planning Board, had suggested in terms of traffic, a means of funding traffic studies, and it was initially referred to as a stabilization fund.
But it really is a revolving fund.
It's really a revolving fund, so it's now been, I, I don't know if we've seen the latest draft from Town Council. He was revising what Chairman Furst-
He sent it over late this afternoon. I don't know if we have it in our files.
I don't think it's in the package, but, but, so Town Council's revised that one. So, we need, we need to make these changes to the warrant, and in order to withdraw and add articles, we need to reopen and close the warrant.
Now, let me ask a question. The, the form of the revolving fund articles now, are we gonna have to reopen again to bring those forward as bylaw changes, or are we okay on that?
The understanding from Town Council today was that the recommendation of the warrant committee would have the bylaw language. That's what I understood, what I mean.
Brilliant, okay.
The, the article asks to create, or to establish a bylaw for this purpose, and then it'll be the recommendation of the warrant committee would have the bylaw.
Yeah, okay, 'cause the current article, I don't think says establish a bylaw. It just says establish a revolving fund of under fifty-three and a half. I guess you can infer that-
Didn't the consolidated facilities one have that language in it?
Yeah, there were, there were two today he was working on regarding revolving-
Okay, that are, that are reworded?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, 'cause the original wording did not, just said to see if the town will approve a revolving fund.
Actually, and it's not in this motion, but we'd also be substituting the new, our new version of the consolidated facilities revolving fund article for the existing one that we submitted, almost like the same thing that the planning board is doing.
Yeah, okay.
Their articles.
That's fine.
The good news is we don't have to have a public hearing on ours, whereas they do. So, do, we wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reopen the May two thousand seventeen annual town meeting warrant to remove both the alcohol sales tax article and the Town Government Study Committee's personnel board article, to remove the old Great Estate planned unit development and Parkway planned unit development articles, and substitute with the revised articles, and to add an article regarding a traffic revolving fund.
Just friendly amendment, I'll second first, then friendly amendment, to add the, I guess to remove and add the revolving fund.
For the consolidated facilities.
Consolidated facilities.
Okay, and you seconded it then, Tom?
I did, yes.
Okay, do we have any discussion then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we also put on a discussion of the town meeting articles. There's just a few. One is the Chief Procurement Officer article. Everyone hopefully received the latest version of that from the Town Government Study Committee, and the question was, did we have any, it came over a few days ago, do we have any comments on that?
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I need to look at a copy as well, I'm sorry.
I do have one copy. Yeah, what they, they tweaked paragraph number six, just to clarify the appeal process. The theory is that-
Oh, I think I did see that, come to think of it, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that if, if, it's highly unlikely that this board is gonna be really involved in submitting, it's, it's not gonna be common that we're gonna be involved in submitting RFPs or requests for bids, that sort of thing, or the school committee. Normally, that's somebody at the apartment.
Yeah, I got it.
So, they clarified that process, and I don't know, has Tom, have you seen-
I've seen, I've seen.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna refresh the number.
And then they also removed real estate from paragraph three, so that it applies to, so it applies to goods and services, but they remove the references to real estate, since that wouldn't be by a purchase order.
Yes.
So, those are the significant changes to the article, and they did ask if we supported it. The warrant committee voted to recommend it last night in the form that the Town Government Study Committee put it forward, and they did ask for the selectman's position, and I told warrant committee we had an honor agenda for tonight. We hadn't had a meeting since they revised it.
Yep. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
We are a co-sponsor of it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I did a little more research. The, there's a couple of different ways you can do this, and I brought it to Town Council last week, but Chapter forty-one, Section one oh three provides for, if you want, if you want town meeting to accept that section, you automatically have a, a CPO, or, but it requires, you know, there are, there are specific requirements within that, but you don't have to kind of draft your own explanation of what the CPO is, it's in there, but it has a thousand-dollar threshold, is one of the onerous things it kind of has in it. Thirty-B references that, but thirty-B also, or at least the manual for thirty-B also explains that if you don't adopt that, you can do your own thing, so this is us doing our own thing, basically.
Does forty-one-B mention, has to be, has to get the proper accreditation within three years?
No, it doesn't, actually, no.
Okay.
I don't believe it does anyways. It's only one paragraph.
Okay. It refers back, thirty-B refers to-
Thirty-B refers to that, yes.
All right. Anything else on the procurement, okay. Then, Traffic Commission article, we circulated a draft of a recommendation that I've been working on with Chief King and with the town administrator and-
Yeah.
DPW director, and one of the questions is the number of residents to put, we were in this situation-
One, two, or three.
We realized it a few years ago, we, town meeting actually did approve putting one resident on, and we've since appointed Lee Toma to the commission. The question is, do we want more than one? I think the department heads and Mr. Dennehy's concern was if we had more than one resident, would, you know, might they represent specific areas of concern and not be looking at the bigger pictures, the townwide pictures like the department heads would be, and the different people who are employees of the town who currently serve on the commission. That, that probably goes to the issue of who might be appointed, and we, obviously, the Board of Selectmen are making the appointments, we'd have to be looking for people who are gonna look big picture, and not just for one particular street.
They'd have to be objective and broad.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I always have concerns when, when these committees start getting to be eleven or twelve people, or thirteen people, it just, it-
Not as effective.
Yeah, it just slows down the process so much, you know, and, not that you don't necessarily get a good result, but, but it is a longer process, certainly, because everybody's gotta weigh in, and everybody's got their own, whether it's an agenda, at least their own opinions.
It's currently nine with one resident, so the question is, if we were to add, you know, if we were to add a resident, we'd probably wanna add two to make it three residents in order to have an odd-numbered committee, and is that too many residents is really the question for us to think about.
I think two is okay, but I'd, I'd wanna, I'd wanna be clear on the fact that I really believe to take a lot of, any of these, these potential issues out, and that one person was left of Randolph Ave, and the other person was right of Randolph Ave, I think, pretty simple. That's how the Little Leagues do it, you know, and-
American versus national.
Yeah, and it's not to, not to have two sides, but I think that, you know, when we look at a lot of the things that we deal with, it gives a representative from half of the town on each side, and they could work collaboratively together, objectively in hope for the whole town, but-
Well, if we were to take that approach, we'd have, you know, one, that we'd have two, but would we want one from the bicycle advisory committee, which was, which is one way of doing it?
I too like the idea of having a bicycle advisory person.
Because they bring the view of pedestrians and bicycle, and the complete streets idea to them.
Right.
Not that, not that that's not already represented in the committee, but it would reinforce it.
Well, someone who's, who's up on, you know, all the changes and with the state, you know, laws, and, and, yeah, I think that that's helpful. One resident that is objective and concerned with the whole town, and maybe someone from the bicycle.
Okay, but so, I, I was proposing three residents. If we proposed two, that would put us at a ten-member committee, which isn't, you know, the only concern there is it's an even number, and it's, you know, a tie vote, and may not be that frequent that it would happen. So, that's something for us to-
Yeah, I think few, I, I would make the decision.
Yeah, I guess, I guess you could resolve that by just saying that whoever the chair doesn't vote, except for break a tie.
Chair doesn't vote, right, just like in the warrant, right.
So, do we want to revise this current draft to say two residents, at least one of whom shall be a member of the bicycle advisory committee?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, we change this to ten. And then, the police chief had raised the issue of whether it's appropriate for the police chief to continue to be the chair, and the thinking more was that it should be the, and it's more common in communities for the Director of Public Works to be the chair of the Traffic Commission.
Yeah, I don't think the chief of police should be the chair.
Because the chief is, in his department, are dealing with enforcement issues.
Correct.
If they're, he would continue to serve on the commission, which is a matter of the DPW director becoming the chair, which would mean, not in the bylaw, but outside of the bylaw, kind of dealing with some issues about how we would staff the commission, and we're the, right now, the communication all goes to the police department, so it would be shifted to the Department of Public Works. So, those are some issues that the town administrator, working with the department heads, would probably come up with a solution for, and is that it could be handled outside of the bylaw. So, were there any other changes on this current draft recommendation?
No, otherwise it's a good thing.
Okay. Okay. Are there, the other articles that we have not yet gotten through the warrant committee, through a vote, that they've approved, so we have, we have the military compensation article that we've already voted to submit, we have the consolidated facilities revolving fund, the roadway stabilization fund, the traffic commission, which we've just discussed, the speed limit article, which we've already voted to submit and recommend, and the traffic stabilization that, not stabilization, now revolving, the traffic revolving fund. So, those still need to be voted, discussed and voted by the warrant committee.
Yep.
We were intending to meet with them as a group tomorrow night. That is not possible because it was not posted, so what we, what we can do is either try to discuss, we could have, it would seem a little bit strange, but we could have each of us meet at different times with the warrant committee tomorrow night and split up some of the articles, or we could try to push some of them to Monday. The chair of the warrant committee was looking to be very accommodating to us and see if we could at least address some of them tomorrow night, and then come back if we need to on Monday night. We are posted for six forty-five Monday night, just for the bond signing, so if we wanted to stay and go to the warrant committee meeting at seven, we could cover some of them, and it's possible that we could even individually tomorrow night discuss some of them with them, and the warrant committee might have questions that we'd have to come back on Monday to answer or to bring any other additional resources that they need. They currently have a lot of the background information we had on the military compensation article and on some of the others, so they have some information in writing that they've been able to review, questions just for us to go in and possess them. So, would it makes, if everyone is still available tomorrow, would it make sense for us to kind of split it up at different times and maybe divide some of them up?
Yeah, I may, may not be available tomorrow night, 'cause I might have to go to a client tomorrow night.
Okay. And the one that I, they actually asked last night, and they wanted to direct a question to you, is on the roadway stabilization fund, just to see where we were at with the number, and it sounds, based on the early discussion, like we're, we think the hundred thousand dollars of the town administrator-
I'll take anything I can get.
Put in the contents, but it's probably all we're gonna get, yeah.
I'm available for tomorrow night, I mean, even if we're not deliberating, and you're in a different room, and I'm, you know-
The biggest thing with that article is, is the form of it, you know, whether it has to be separated out, or, you know, how it, you know, how it works with the override, that's, and that's what Town Council was-
So, on that one, why don't we follow up with Town Council tomorrow, just to make sure we've got that button down, and then if you can't, it sounds like you can't be there, Tom, so either David or I could take that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you, if you want to go, do you want to go maybe first, David? If you're in meeting with the warrant committee and a couple of them, I can wait outside in one of the other conference rooms and then meet with them afterwards. I, I thought I might stay to hear some of their budget discussion, because I've been going to some of them.
I think I have the military and the speed limit.
You're probably okay both going, as long as you don't sit at the table at the same time, I would think.
Yeah, well, Town Council thought it was probably better for, for us to not be in the same room, since we're not posted, to not both be in the room.
There's another room outside, so we can just, we could flip off, and, you know, I'm happy to discuss the two articles, you know, the speed limit and the military, if they have questions on that.
Okay. Now-
On, on the speed limit one, I assume it's the board of selectmen ultimately that would set the fundamental speed limits and which roads would apply to that.
Let me just, let's see how it's worded. Is that everyone's recollection?
I mean, I guess, I, I would assume that your, your major connecting roads would not be, although it seems like the city of Boston, what, even Mass Ave is 25 miles an hour. I mean, every, every road in the whole damn city is 25 miles an hour. But you would think that-
I think we'd want-
You wouldn't want Edge Hill, you wouldn't want Brook Road, you wouldn't want-
I think we would want the advice of the chief.
Yeah.
You know, I, we'd want his professional advice based upon, you know, I mean, they, they do this every day for a living.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, it would certainly be the traffic commission-
Right.
-recommendation, but-
The chief was at the, at the warrant committee, and they, and they did ask, and he told them that he was in favor of it, I mean, that specific question didn't come up, but, but they did ask him a question about whether we, if there's any data or evidence that it would reduce crashes or accidents.
Yeah.
And his response then really was, it's really too early to tell, because it's only, it's in effect now in Boston, but it hasn't-
One thing that I will mention is, and I saw Lee Toma make a comment related to impact on 25 versus 40, and there's like a 90 percent chance of survival rate at 25 miles per hour, and about a 50 percent chance at 40.
Yeah.
So that's, that's pretty good data for me.
Yes, all right, here's the article. It does say, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the statute which would allow the board of selectmen to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district, in any, in the town, on any way that is not a state highway.
So you, so we would have the-
Yes, it's an authorization.
Lee Toma forwarded a picture, I don't know if you saw it, but it's one of the signs in Boston, and I think it's the resounding sign that they're putting up, says speed limit 25 unless otherwise posted.
Posted, yes, yeah. Yeah, we, I guess we would have to do that at every entrance to the town, since it's going to be fundamental, not posted otherwise, but-
That, that information has gone over to the warrant committee, as well as the request that came over initially, because the East Mill Neighborhood Association brought this to our attention and asked us officially to submit it, and we did vote to submit it. So that, they, they have their, their-
Excuse me.
Okay, so David, you're going to speak to them about the fire, not the fire, the military compensation article and the speed limit?
Correct.
Okay. So maybe we could, are you going to be there at seven, because maybe we could arrange for you to go and speak with them first?
That's fine with me, yeah, great.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Anything else on any warrant articles?
I don't think so.
That's it.
I think we've got it covered. All right, I think we've covered every other item on the agenda.
We have.
Which brings us to the town administrator's report.
Thank you again. Busy couple of weeks again. On Monday, February 27th, myself and a bunch of town officials did a call with Standard and Poor's. We got a letter Monday reaffirming the AAA bond rating. Some of the comments in, in the letter, and it's, it's a lengthy assessment, very strong debt and contingent liability position, strong institutional framework, very strong economy, strong management, and strong budgetary flexibility. So that's a credit to this board, my predecessor, Emery Fagan, the department heads, and all the teams out there, as well as the taxpayers, right? It's, it's, it's one thing to get a AAA bonding, and Tom, you probably forgot more about this than I'll ever know, but it's, it's pretty hard to retain it, and it's just, it's good fiscal policy that's in place, so, everybody deserves a pat on the back for that, so.
When you consider how lean we really are, it's, you know, we really, it, you know, it's really amazing that we do have the AAA bond rating, but, but it's a credit to the town and its ability to pass overrides when, when necessary, and, you know, because we don't have necessarily the reserves that other AAA towns have, but, but we do have a strong management team and a lot of good people here. No questions?
Yeah.
And can I just take a moment to divert for a minute? I think a lot of the credit goes to Tom Hurley. Tom stepping off our board, everyone has heard that news, very sad news, I think, and we're going to miss Tom's creative thinking and financial expertise and care for affordable housing, and all the important things that Tom brings to the board and all the things. But one of them, and we're going to, we've got another couple of months or so to keep talking about that and all the great things Tom has done for the town.
We can roast them too, we have time.
We can roast them too. I like that idea, David. But, but Tom Hurley has been a big part of the financial management of the town, going back, I think, a dozen years, as a member of the warrant committee, and then the Chair of the warrant committee, and a member of this board for two terms, who has brought forward ideas like the debt service issue, where we could, if we could try to hold that steady, and as, as the school debt falls off, maybe put on other debt. That's something that Tom brought to town meeting a couple of years ago, and it was sort of an outside-the-box idea that is still pending up with the state, from what I understand, Tom.
It is, yeah, it's not dead.
You're still working to get it through?
It's not dead.
It's not dead, it's still on the table. But those are sorts of things that help us, help our finances over the long run, and have really helped the town, I think, get to the AAA bond rating, with careful conservative management of the budgets in some tough years, and creative thinking that helps us address a lot of these issues, and stormwater bills, I know, have been a bit of a controversy recently, but Tom Hurley did a lot of work on that, and was recognized, he and Joe Lynch, for doing that last year by a lot of the different agencies like NEPA and, and others, and a lot of communities are looking to the work they did. So I, all of that, I think, goes into, I mean, you're, the town administrator's right that it's a lot of department heads, and it's the town administrator and different people, and I think Tom Hurley had a big role to play in that over the past dozen years.
Yeah, I think- Thank you for the kind words.
A steady hand, and, and our job is to have a fiduciary responsibility to the town, and no one has done it as well as he in a long, long time.
Okay, don't, don't-
We'll get, we'll get you later, don't worry.
I'm going to get a swolthead if you keep adding much more.
No, but we'll get you later. That's all you're going to get.
We'll do the roasting later, right?
Okay, sounds good.
Community Compact, the information technology grant, March 1st. I applied on behalf of the town for a $200,000 grant-
Great.
-through the state's Community Compact to implement a 3-1-1 software package. I've said it before, in my past life, municipalities and, in particular, Boston and Milton are very good at being reactive, right? I think you get more bang for your buck, and you're more efficient when you're proactive.
Sure.
A system like this allows you to do more with your limited resources. It was a no-brainer in Boston, and in three months I've been here, there's a lot of good work being done in the town, but I think there's some stuff that, when you engage the constituency, you're gaining eyes and ears. You're gaining inspectors out there that, you know, that you don't make full-time employees, and this system is a, is a back-and-forth between the constituency and government. They, they tell you what's going on, and you get, you reengage with them, and it's a, it's a better relationship, so.
Yes, absolutely.
We'll see where that goes. I believe the applications are due by April 5th. Ours has been submitted, and they'll make a decision shortly thereafter, so step in the right direction, hopefully, just to improve the constituent services.
That being said, should we try and rattle the, the IT committee has been put in place, I don't believe, if we can rattle it down?
Is there a moderator appointing?
There's a moderator, yeah. We could just maybe give the moderator a call, see if we can, in conjunction with the application, get a, a committee in place. If that makes sense.
Okay, duly noted. The Audit Services, the auditing committee reviewed the five proposals, and myself and the audit committee will be meeting for a second interview with the final three proposals, so that, that will be March 20th here in the Cronin Room. Each of the three will give them 45 minutes, the audit committee has some questions, further questions to ask, but from Kathy White's opinion, all three are very, very solid participants, so that process is going well. We should have a decision shortly, shortly after the 20th. And I just want to read something. Lastly, this was an email that everyone got from constituent named Dave Shea. My stepfather, my stepfather's dog Chloe left our yard today. I could not find her, so I reached out to the Milton Police and Nancy Bersani. Nancy stepped up, and she went out on her own, driving around, posting pictures of Chloe on Facebook, and reaching out to the community to help find Chloe. Nancy kept in touch with me as we both looked for Chloe. It was not an ideal way to spend your Saturday, but when you love animals, it's all worth it. Nancy Bersani is a true professional, kind, generous lady, who went well and beyond today in helping find Chloe. We had a happy ending. Chloe decided to come home. She is safe and sound. I will always be grateful to Nancy, as she has my deepest appreciation always. Thank you, Nancy. And that's Dave Shea.[1594.64]